It's gonna feel like deja vu. Welcome again to the Bristol Town Council meeting of May 7th. And we love the Pledge of Allegiance so much, we're gonna do it again, everybody. If you could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. You're wondering why we do it twice. Is that the first one isn't televised and you can't watch it online? And we want to make sure that we always start a meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the first item of business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda was special recognition, and that's for the proclamation for Lieutenant Ricardo Morado.
Excellent. Chief, can I go right to you, sir? And if I can't, can I go right to you, sir?
Yes, sir. So, uh, tonight, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Ricardo Morado. And I believe he's accompanied by his beautiful wife, Gigi Morado. Lieutenant?
Right there. That's perfect.
So, after 25 years of service, I asked the town administrator if the town council could recognize all of the efforts of Lieutenant Morado. And I certainly would like to speak about all of the work that he's done to keep the police department both nationally and state accredited. He also served on the Ripe Pac Commission. And one of the things that I'll fondly, fondly remember Ricardo for is he was behind the, the community night, um, the Community Night Out that we hold on the Common two weeks before the kids go back to school. And many people have grown to be, uh, the highlight of the summer, uh, seeing all of the kids and all of the business community come together, all of the departments in the town, all you officials. And, uh, it really is a great way to kind of seal the summer for the youth of Bristol and get the kids ready to go back to school with backpacks. Everybody has a great night, something to eat, I would say, free of charge to all of the work that Ricardo has done. Um, and promoting all of the businesses in Bristol. It's an opportunity for every, you know, one of the businesses to come out and to, uh, uh, put their product on display, you know, for the community. So it had so many benefits from the kids to the business community, to all of us in, in, in public service to kind of showcase, you know, what, what we are for the town. So, uh, a credit to Ricardo, uh, a credit to keeping us nationally and state accredited. And, uh, on behalf of everyone at the police department, we wish him extremely well in his future endeavors.
That was outstanding, Chief. Can we have a round of applause? Mister Administrator? No, please.
Well, the chief summed it up really well.
How do you follow that up? That's the point, right?
Well, we all know how difficult policing can be and how we have to build on, uh, community support. And, uh, Rich Morado took that seriously years ago, you know? Uh, and he matched professionalism with it, which was really remarkable. But he's very diligent and he was an asset to the Bristol Police Department. Uh, and I'm just, uh, uh, pleased to see that you're, you're ending your 25 years career as a lieutenant in, uh, very honorable, with very honorable service. So, thank you. Uh, I also have the retirement watch.
Outstanding. Let's start there, sir. And we'll end with our proclamation. Well, we were gonna do a Rolex, but we didn't get your time, actually.
I won't read, I won't read the whole thing that goes along with it. I think, uh, it's a very, very nice retirement watch that, uh, you'll be wearing with a great honor and sincere appreciation from all of us here in Bristol.
Congratulations.
Best wishes. Congratulations.
Lieutenant, because you can never get tired of a round of applause. There's just one more thing, which is the proclamation signed by my colleagues, by the administrator and the clerk. And, uh, it's a reminder that we speak on behalf of the people of Bristol. And the people of Bristol hold the police department in such high regard. And I say this often, and I say, actually, I say this all the time on behalf of my colleagues. That is no small feat. In other communities, in fact, you and I have had this dialogue about other communities. And the level of service that the Bristol Police Department gives is just outstanding. And it is, in my opinion, and I don't think I'm overstating this, unmatched out there. The people of Bristol respect the police department because the police department respects the people of Bristol and its visitors. The attendance that we have at the Fourth of July and other community events that we have would give an opportunity for issue, and it's never that way. It's quite the opposite. So, people that I talk to out of town speak in such high regard, people that I speak with in town, uh, that much higher because of the day-to-day and the moment-to-moment. And being recognized for 25 years of part of that excellent service is just, it's truly outstanding. And what you've put back into the community, particularly with accreditation. If, uh, the public is not familiar with the efforts that the lieutenant did, it was a tremendous effort to, uh, have the town accredited. That doesn't mean he brought that out. Is that he recognized, he recorded, he did all of that hard work to tell the nation of what a quality service that we offer. And that is just one of many things. I, I love the community, uh, events on the Common. I think you've been dunked a few times, if I understand correctly. Too many. Yeah, just a few times, so. And that's fun. Uh, but back to seriousness is that your contribution to the community and to our outstanding police department cannot be understated. Thank you.
Yeah.
Of course you can.
We'll do it again. Thank you.
Lieutenant, we'd just like to share a couple of words with us.
This is not prepared or anything, but I just want to thank the chief and the town of Bristol for this opportunity 25 years ago. Believe it or not, Steve was my FTO. Uh, Steve and a few other guys have since retired, but I'll not forget some of the instructions and the, how open he was towards me right off the bat. Here's my cell number, and I felt very welcome back in the day. And as far as accreditation goes, I gotta tell you that, uh, I don't know if the chief has mentioned this, but the last onsite that we had, uh, and I, I never realized this until the assessor actually pointed this out, being here a couple of hours, because they have to find a goal, a, uh, a common theme with the town that they are assessing. And it, and it quickly dawned on him, but that we are a community-oriented, uh, you know, town. And he was very excited about that. He, he wanted to highlight everything possible. And that's why a lot of the Citizens Academy people came in and there was nothing negative. In fact, we challenged him to just walk downtown and just pick any random business, walk in at free will, speak to them, and he came out. Everything was positive. So, the, the town has always been a community-oriented town. Some departments have community, uh, let me call it, sections within their police department, subdivisions. The town of Bristol, I've always said that, and I think Nate, you've mentioned this, Tim. We are a community-oriented, well, I'm not part of it anymore, but we are a community-oriented police department, day in and day out, you know, station-wide, not just a segment of personnel. So, I'm very proud to have retired here as a lieutenant and put in my service for the town of Bristol. And I want to thank each and every one of you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Chairman, I think, uh, I, I want to just say just a few words. Um, Lieutenant Morado, I think most of all, we're gonna miss you. You're a master of well, uh, master of well-timed wit, I would say. We're gonna really miss your jokes, but, um, thank you for just being a steady leader and a protector of the town. Um, since my interaction with you throughout the years, like your professionalism, your integrity, your, your deep commitment to our community, um, has been pretty amazing. So, um, you've led with courage and compassion, um, through the events that you've done. So, I just want to say, uh, you'll be missed and, uh, and, uh, we will wish you all the best in, in your retirement. Thank you.
Well, Mister Chairman, just one thing. When you came up here, uh, Lieutenant, I, there was a couple of things I wrote down that I think are synonymous with you. One of them is that lockbox program. And the other one is, um, one of the things I learned from you is that we have an ordinance in town that requires every house or property to have the number displayed prominently on it so that fire vehicle, EMS vehicles, police officers, first responders can quickly respond to any emergencies that might be happening over there. And I want to say this, that it might seem little, but every second counts. And all those little things, they can add up to big things. Yep. And so, don't ever let those little things, don't ever discount the little things. Congratulations.
Yeah. Well said, Eric.
Well, um, I've got to know you for quite a few years, and certainly it's been a pleasure and an honor to have known you. And, uh, thank you for all the years of service to the town and to the community. Uh, but as already been highlighted, you know, that your contributions certainly will make a difference. You know, a lasting, uh, difference. So, thank you. And, uh, your best wishes on your retirement. Enjoy, stay well, stay healthy.
I just wanted to thank you as well. Um, it's funny that you mentioned the lockbox, because that's what I think of too. Even though there's all these other things, like the night out, and probably the accreditation is probably the most important aspect of that. And in the beginning, I mean, it's probably become a little bit more routine. Once you do it the first time, you've kind of got your templates in a way. But initially, it's sort of a very big, um, overwhelming task. So, thank you for getting us on that path and, and working on that and continuing that. That makes a huge difference to the training and to the, um, respect that the police department has because we have that and outside people are observing and, um, looking at the quality of our department. So, thank you so much for all of that, and good luck in your retirement and enjoy yourself and.
Thank you. Take care.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. And we have the town council meeting minutes from April 23rd. We have the town council executive session minutes also from April 23rd. And we also have the town council meeting, special meeting minutes from April 28th.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is B1. This is Charles Eli Dunn, 301 Hope Street Folklore LLC, doing business as Folklore Provisions. And this is a request for a Class BV liquor license and expansion of the premises.
This, as the clerk just mentioned, is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? If you come up and speak, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Elaine White, 11 Constitution Street. I'm right around the corner from Folklore, and I completely support this. So, I just want to say that because he's completely responsible, and it's just great to have him on the corner. Great energy over there. And we got a lot going on down there on that Constitution Street, so we need that good energy up there on the top.
Very concise.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone against? Is there anyone against? Is there anyone against?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
To Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is B2. This is a public hearing for Community Development Block Grant. Application regarding proposed activities for the inclusion of the town of Bristol's 2025 Community Block Grant, Grant Application, including renovations to the Wally School Building in the amount of $800,000, and renovations of the food pantry portion of the East Bay Food Pantry and Thrift Shop in the amount of $250,000. And also, under consideration is the adoption of the resolution authorizing the town to file the CDBG application in the amount of $1,050,000. I'd also like to know that there is a, uh, letter received from Sandra Darling, and it is on the council dais as a received at meeting item.
Thank you. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Diane Williamson, I think we'll start with you.
Thank you. So, I support this application. We've been working with the food pantry. Uh, they are here tonight, if you have any specific questions. Our CDBG Program Manager, Bob Plain, is also here tonight. And the, um, second application for the Wally School is to continue to do the restoration of the Wally School Building for the Community Resource Senior Center use.
Excellent. Any questions for Diane before we open it up for comment? No? All right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone here? Making sure everybody was. Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now you need a, uh, motion, um, to, uh, adopt the resolution authorizing the town to file CDBG application in the amount of $1,050,000.
Yes.
For move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, the next item on the agenda is C1. This is Ordinance 2025-3, Chapter 17, Article 2 to the Alcoholic Beverage Establishments, Section 1782, and this is to decrease the number of limited BV licenses from eight to seven. Second reading.
Motion to adopt a second reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C2. This is Ordinance 2025-4, Chapter 17, Article 2 to the Alcohol Beverage Establishments. And this is to increase the number of BV licenses from 32 to 33. Second reading.
Make a motion. Yeah, go ahead. Uh, motion to adopt a second reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Just take a quick moment for the public. What you just heard on the last one was we removed one limited BV license. And what you hear on this one is there's a motion and a second to increase the BV licenses, Class BV licenses by one. So, we removed the limited BV, add the regular, and this will come into play in a little bit as, uh, we go down the agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C3, and this is for Ordinance Number 2025-5. This is Chapter 16. There is a typo to say mother vehicle, it's supposed to say motor vehicle, so my error. Um, so it's motor vehicles in traffic, Article 5, stopping, standing, and parking. And this is where no parking box located across from 28 Shaw's Lane, and this is second reading.
I make a motion that we adopt it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to adopt. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C4. This is Ordinance 2025-6, Chapter 16, Motor Vehicles in Traffic. And this is to include the portion of Hope Street to the residential zone and to update the designated residential parking zone. Second reading.
I make a motion we adopt it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Just please refresh me, um, my mind, or refresh me, or whatever, as to why we really doing this one?
So, when, when the council adopted an ordinance to extend the residential district in November of 2024, there was a portion of Hope Street from Franklin Street North to Washington Street that was excluded from the language. That was one section of it. So, this is to include that, to allow that to be, um, clearly written in the ordinance. And the other section is under, um, where it designates the residential parking zone that just needed to be cleaned up to coordinate with the new amendments. So, it was more the meets and bounds within the residential zone that just, that's in a different subsection that wasn't clearly written. So, this will coincide with what the council adopted back in November.
Thank you. Because I was looking through, as I was reading, it was quite good, it was straightened and some new stuff, and I'm going, okay, so I was just trying to.
Yeah, so that was clearing the meets and bounds within that district.
Super. Thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, as an example.
Yes.
Um, right now, someone who lives on their home faces Hope Street, right? Go ahead, give, you can finish that.
So, one of the issues is there's a small portion of Hope Street from Franklin to Washington Street. The houses face Hope Street, and some of those do not have driveways. So, what would happen is they would have to park on one of the finger streets. So, example would be Oliver Street. Oliver Street is, um, considered part of the residential district. So, if somebody who lives on Hope Street, on that facing of Hope Street, if they wanted to park on the road, there is no parking on that portion of the road, as well as they wouldn't be allowed to park, park on any of the finger streets within that residential district because they were not listed in that zone. So, this will allow those people who live in those portions to receive the residential sticker to allow them to park within the vicinity of their home.
Well said. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C5. This is Ordinance 2025-8, Chapter 8, Section 72, Independence Boat Ramp. And this is for the vehicle load restrictions. This is first reading.
I make a motion that we constitute this first reading?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion?
Uh, yes, I know that normally we don't have a whole lot of discussion in the first reading. However, I have a question on number three, and if I may ask, I believe the harbor master is here?
Good evening. What was the number? I don't have it in front of me.
No vessel or equipment, including but not limited to landing craft, bow ramps, external ramps, gangways, and grounded vessels and barges shall be permitted to use the Independence Park Boat Ramp unless permission is granted by the harbor master.
Yes. So.
Go ahead.
The, the rapid decay of the old ramp was a large part of the two landing crafts that would come in and drop their, uh, front doors down onto the dock. And then when they, when they, especially the larger one, when they were bringing a triaxle onboard the boat, big heavy truck, um, they would have to power forward, and now the, the bow doors were going into the ramp and destroying it. So, yeah.
Got you. Understood. No. And because in the morning when I walked by, I, I'd seen them, a few of them there. And I always wonder, you know, how that would, uh, impact the area, so, okay.
We, we had asked that when they were doing that, to put dunage down, put plywood, board, something to help it. They forget a lot. So, but the little one will still be able to go to the beach on the side and, and load the things that he has to load, but the, the bigger one, that, that's just destroying our ramp. But we're trying to make that thing last a little bit.
And is it vessels over a certain length that cause that, or the really, you talk about the big, these big vessels that really do a lot of the damage? Is it, is it anything over a certain?
No, most things that, yeah, pulled out of there are on, on rubber tire trailers, you know?
Sure.
And that, that doesn't do any damage. They, I believe it's 32,000 pound load limit per axle is what we had written up. That's what they're.
Maximum, maximum load of 32,000, you're correct.
Yeah. Par engineering had written that load limit up. So, if you haven't had a chance to see it, it's gonna be underwater, uh, probably this weekend. So, if you want to go down and look at it. But, uh, yeah, this, we're just trying to protect it, preserve it.
For the public, we've spent a little, uh, well, not a little, over a million dollars on, which is staggering that we say those things, just, you know, a million dollars.
Yeah.
Um, but it's a lot of money. So, the, the attempt with this ordinance is to make sure that it's there for everyone many, many, many years from now, and we don't do this again.
Yes.
So, what's a million dollars?
Between friends? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's a lot of money, so.
Jim. Yes, of course, Jim. Uh, just one more question, Greg. Who, uh, with the fine, who will be enforcing that? Would it be you or police?
We're, we're gonna enforce it.
You're gonna enforce it?
If we need help, we can, we'll call the police department.
Okay. All right. And, uh, Mike, do we need to call that out in the ordinance? Of who's gonna enforce it, or no?
That's true. Just about every ordinance.
Okay.
Um, is either enforced by police or the building, and we'll, we'll be good. I'll take a look at it.
I was just saying, I don't know if we need to call it out, that's all. Okay.
We, we are having a sign made down there as well. Once the order's passed.
Outstanding.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D1. This is Charles Eli Dunn, Folklore LLC, doing business as Folklore Provisions, 301 Hope Street. This is a request for the Class BV liquor license and to expand the alcohol service area.
I make a.
Is Charles here?
Yes. Or Eli? He's like, who's Charles?
Members of the council, hi.
Good evening. Good to see you. We're gonna, I'll tell you what, you stay right there because we have three items for you. And on the third one, we'll give you a 30-second commercial, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So, on the first one, so.
I make a motion we approve it?
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion?
Just, uh, I think there's a six-month review. So, just wanted to amend, yeah, I think, but I heard Tony, I think I heard you say that, right?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. That's what I heard.
So, so we had a motion, uh, made by Tony and a second by Mary that, uh, to approve with a six-month review. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D2. This is Charles Eli Dunn, Folklore, 301 Hope Street, request to expand the sidewalk alcohol service license area.
I make a motion that we approve it, based on the recommendations and in compliance with all the ordinances.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary, as stated, any discussion?
Yes, uh, the 10 o'clock, um, outdoors, is that consistent with all the others? For the 10 PM?
For the sidewalk use license? I don't, uh, I don't think there's a restriction as to the sidewalk use license on a time-wise, more so on the dancing and entertainment license.
Okay.
But they generally follow the same timelines of the actual business establishment.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
So, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is D3. This is Charles Eli Dunn, Folklore, 301 Hope Street, and this is for a dancing and entertainment license.
Based on the positive recommendation, recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion?
With a six-month review?
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
With a six-month review.
Outstanding. And that was seconded by you.
Nice job, Tony. Nice job.
Okay. Discussion? Um, Eli, tell us, um, what you're planning with entertainment there.
So, we talked about doing like a, like a jazz brunch or something like that. So, we're only open during the day, and we do occasionally special events at night, once a month, right now. We hope to add maybe a couple more a month, different themes. Um, but primarily, what we would love to do is just do, like, something like a jazz brunch, maybe an acoustic, uh, artist in the corner while people are dining. We don't have a lot of space, so we're not, there's no stage or anything, so it would just be like small acts, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and then with the possibility of if we do, like, for our supper club, if we want to have someone playing the guitar in the corner, or the piano, or jazz, or something, so.
That's great.
Just things like that.
When do you think your expansion will be done?
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Contractor says a couple weeks, I don't believe.
Oh, good luck. I don't even know who it is, but good luck, you know?
Um, so we were, I'm I'm hoping by June. Yeah, so the floors are going in tomorrow, so it's like, you know.
Great.
But, yeah, so I would say within the next few weeks.
Anything else that you want to share on your thirty-second commercial?
Um, no, I mean, I just, like, I was talking to Rachel, like, when you guys were talking to the lieutenant earlier, like, one of the first things we noticed when we opened Folklore was just the community spirit in this town is incredible. Like, everybody in Lohho, they call it, came and, you know.
What do they call it?
Lohho, Lohho.
I must be new to town. I hadn't heard that one. Really, I like that. Excellent. If I interrupt you, go ahead.
We were just so welcomed in the neighborhood. People were so friendly. Um, and it's just, I, you know, I don't, if anyone's from Warren here, I don't want to like say anything bad about Warren, but I just want to say the community here has been incredible, you know? It's just been incredible. Um, and so we're really grateful to have the business here. We love being down in, you know, Lower Hope, Lohho. And uh, it does seem like good things are happening in in Lohho, so.
What's uh Upper Hope? Is there a?
I don't know.
No? Okay. It doesn't matter, I suppose, for you. Everything's Lohho.
Yeah, so we're really, we're really, we're grateful to be a part of the community here. Hi-ho.
There's hi-ho, lo-ho. We could pass a resolution about that, maybe, to name it that, yeah.
I I think a lot of it, Eli, has to do with your your uh reputation. You have a great reputation uh over the years. And we're really happy to have you in Bristol. And I mean, I don't know if like you're actually gonna have a brunch brunch or like what you already calling, you're calling that brunch, but you know, I saw that you may open some nights as well um in this paperwork. So I think that's awesome and and your expansion to the, to next door will give you a little bit more space.
It's gonna be quite the transformation in there, too.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's gonna be really cool. And some of the events you're doing, like the um, the the monthly thing, that's pretty cool, the dinner club or supper club. What do you call it? Supper club?
Supper club, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, just be careful how you refer to the area because Elaine is back there watching, you know, she's keeping tabs.
Any other discussion from the council? So we had a motion and a second um with a six-month review, as stated. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussions about Lohho?
I might be at the end of the meeting.
Do you want to know about hi-ho?
It's great.
Do you want to know about hi-ho?
No.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G four. This is Rosa by St. Elizabeth Church for the United Brotherhood Committee, five seventy-seven Wood Street. This is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for the live auction on June seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D five, and this is also Rosa St. Elizabeth Church, United Brotherhood Committee, five seventy-seven Wood Street. And this is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for June thirteenth from six to eleven, June fourteenth from six to eleven, and June fifteenth from six to ten.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
And I'll second that one as well.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion? It never let it be said that St. Elizabeth's Church doesn't have a lot of fun, right? Think it's outstanding.
We have a couple wraps back there.
Outstanding.
I see that Rosa was not able to make it, but they uh, they're filling in. They always do a good job and they always busy around there too as well.
Outstanding.
Making sure we're doing everything.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
There's one more.
Rosa, she's busy.
Rosa's back. Rosa's back for D six, St. Elizabeth Church, Santa Cristo Committee, five seventy-seven Wood Street. And this is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for June twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from six to eleven P M, June twenty-first from six to eleven P M, and June twenty-second from six to ten P M.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
And uh, let's not forget all the Melasadas, you know, and the sandwiches, all of the good stuff, you know?
There's a few more weeks to wait, and then we'll have three weeks of.
Then if you're looking for some extra streets, just go to Folklore. All right.
They were happy to eat.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F one. We have Selcan and Marlin McKenzie, fifty-six Greenway Drive. This is a request for acquisition of town land described as plat one fifty-nine lot one zero five seven on Greenway Drive.
Can we get a little, oh, they coming out.
Welcome. If you could state your name, well, actually, you don't need to. They're both right here on the agenda. So you're in front of us um asking for the town or to purchase the town's land, right? Um, I I gotta tell you, when I first saw this, I am usually very much against. I don't even want to have a discussion like this. But after some research, speaking with the administrator, looking at the recommendations, it's a little different than anything else that we've looked at. Um, what you're asking of us, and maybe you can just, why do I need to say it? You tell us what you're asking.
Good evening. Uh, so we have a, let's see, five foot wide, ninety-five foot long um plot of land. We have deciduous, I just used to call them non-evergreen um shrubs that I've been maintaining. And it's a lot of work. Um, up on a ladder, I have like my hedge cutter. And after two years, I was like, yeah, I really don't want to do it anymore. Um, so what we wanted to do is clear those out and either put a fence and or a combination of evergreen trees, something that's gonna look nice year round and not require as much maintenance. So, yeah, we were under the impression initially, based on what our neighbors told us, that it was our land and that's why we should cut it. Um, but it turns out it was town land and we were just, yeah, ma- making it look nice in the meantime. So, yeah.
So what you just said to us is, is you have ninety-five feet long and five feet wide. So as I started this off, I said, I'm I'm usually dead set against these. But this does not allow access from one side of the street to another side of the street. There's nothing underneath this property that I'm aware of or any of the recommendations show about access that we would need for um drainage or piping or anything like that. Um, it is certainly a very poorly designed park if we decide to make one five feet wide. Suppose we have enough? Yes, as long as you swing this way, not that way, right? So um, for myself and certainly I want to hear from my colleagues, um, if we were to authorize this, it would certainly work. I'm gonna ask the solicitor to weigh in on what next steps are. Um, for myself, I would like to see the following. One is that we would definitely need findings of facts on this. That's not yours, that's ours. So if someone were to come to us in the future and say, well, you sold them town land, why can't I buy town land, right? And in this instance, there's no use for this. There can't be use. I don't know how, in my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for my colleagues, um, of how we could, how the town would benefit from this. Highest best use doesn't seem like it would be ours. So um, findings of fact to make sure this doesn't come, this doesn't set a precedent. Two is that if we do this, we obviously have to advertise. We can't just sell it to you. We have to say to the public, you know, this is out there and available to it. Um, I did ask to the solic, excuse me, the solicitor ahead of time. Um, we can, we don't have to take highest bid, but for example, if someone on, I don't know, Hope Street decided to purchase it, we can actually ask for reasons why they want to own it and that can weigh into our decision. One would wonder why one would want to do that.
I would, so.
But it is possible. Um, and then also the cost of conveyance should be the responsibility of the purchaser. What do I mean by that? Obviously, the purchase price of the property plus a recording the deed. I don't think we would need an appraisal in an instance like this, but assume all of those things that go along with the advertising, right? Should not be the burden of the town. It should be the burden of the purchaser, if that's you, right? Or I don't know if your neighbors are interested in this and this is two and a half feet by two and a half. No idea. Um, for myself, if all of those things were in place, it seems, and again, Mister Administrator, you gave us uh great recommendations from uh the department. It's seemed straightforward to me. Colleagues?
Diane, um, did I read that there's, there's more than one property like this that that this is kind of happening around in that neighborhood or?
Yes, and I I can't really trace why it was um done. The um, the deed references um six other similar smaller strips of land in this neighborhood that were deeded to the town in nineteen seventy-five. Um, so I don't, and it's, as was stated, it's not a paper road. We checked with all the utility companies. There's, there's no, there's no utility in the area um under this strip. So I'm not really sure.
That's not a widespread practice that's happening in other towns at that time or anything like that?
No.
You guys didn't find oil, right?
Archaeological zone or something.
So it's unique just to that area, right? Good question.
Yeah, and and the only thing, I mean, and this is totally just, just a speculation on my part, but the only thing I was thinking, because it's not on the recorded plat either. So I was almost thinking that maybe when they did the final surveys for these lots, they, there was just some calculation that they ended up with land that wasn't part of the lot, and so they deeded it to the town. That's, that's what I came up with. But that was back with um the Palazzini, uh Palazzinis when they did the development.
You can't rule it out, right?
Right, right.
Anything else, colleagues?
Mister Solicitor, could you share what next steps would be if we want to move forward?
I would suggest a motion um to authorize the administration to move forward with um the sale of the property. That's gonna require um a resolution at um an upcoming meeting. It's gonna require a public hearing. It's gonna require, as you've mentioned, advertising. Um, and then at the public hearing, you'll come back and presumably you'll say, great, we're gonna buy it, and then the council will vote officially to transfer the property.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Discussion?
Yes, and were, were you, was your interest to actually to purchase the property outright? And so that you will own it as in addition to your lot?
Yeah, so yeah, we put fence, put trees, didn't want a situation where maybe the town was gonna want to use it at some point. So we just wanted to make a straightforwardness. Ours, we maintain it. We, I don't know if it's merged or or treated as like a, an addition, additional lot. But um, yeah, we just purchased it outright. And if we had to explore other avenues, we would, but that was like the first path.
Because I mean, the other option would have been a license to maintain it, and you don't want to keep doing that with a certain uncertainty.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Now, colleagues, I think we're making the right decision here. I think it keeps it clean, puts it back on the tax rules, and it it gives you the ownership to maintain the property. So I think it's a smart move.
And I think the thing is too, sometimes like the paper roads or whatever, it's still, even though they're not developed, still provides access for emergency medical, fire, fire, uh fire trucks and things like that, where this doesn't seem to have any real purpose. And like Diane said, it's interesting, like maybe just a miscalculation, like how did that become, you know, like that, just a little piece of land. And I think it's gonna be, the interesting thing will be like the neighbors that had bought that, like, you know, do they want to split it? Do they, they want to like um just say like you can have it, like purchase it yourself or whatever. So that's something we, we have to give the opportunity to everybody, as uh the chairman already stated.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we talked to him and she told me, yeah, the previous owner said it was yours. He said, don't touch it. Um, but I did just process, because I had her sign a petition as well. And they wanted no part. She's like, you have two small dogs. I just want to make sure that whatever you do put in keeps the dogs in the backyard. They don't want to let their dogs out and they're just, yeah, kind of gone. So I said, yeah, that's, yeah, it's, it's fair enough. So um, that's their involvement, but I'm sure the process still has to kind of, yeah, play out, so, yeah.
And Mike, I just want to restate one more time, just to make sure that that we take extra effort to include on our final act on this, that uh findings of fact that say why we're doing this.
Oh, absolutely.
Why this is atypical, why it makes sense for five feet times ninety-five.
So if anyone's ever looking back at it a few years from now, it'll be well documented, yes.
Yeah.
Just, just briefly, you know, as already Mister Chairman pointed out, that was my first thing, you know, um. Anytime that there is a piece, a strip of land that goes from one street to another that there's access, it's always important for us to hold on to that because you never know what the future is. Unlike this here, it's a dead end, so to speak. I mean, it only goes to the back of the property to the line there. It doesn't go anywhere. It serves no purpose to anybody else other than obviously to either yourselves or your neighbors, so.
I think one other quick thing, and Diane, if you don't mind if I ask you a question, you mentioned that there are six properties in this situ, kind of in this situation in that neighborhood?
Yeah, there's seven total, this one and six others.
So do you have, um, do you know if any of those others, are they all in the same situation? Or are there utilities or other purposes for some of the others? Or I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking a a little bit out loud, like, is it worth trying to clean those up now together? Um, so that, you know, these like, oh, they did this, we're gonna come in and straggle along, but we don't know. There could be other issues with some of those others. So do you have any idea about it right now or?
I don't. I'd have to look into it.
If I may, uh, Diane, when I was administrator, I dealt with that area there. And there's actually a couple of them that go through. Uh, because I remember folks coming in and they wanted us to maintain them and having full access. And it was like, uh, we don't need to, uh, you know, we're not using it as a through way, so.
That's, that's right, because when we did the um, the watershed study in this neighborhood, we found there were um, at least two, maybe three paper streets that people had, did have a license to maintain because the town wouldn't want to abandon those streets. So um, I can do some research and um I don't know, come back, I guess maybe with the RFP or with, if the solicitor reviews the RFP, we might want to.
I, I'm not, my advice at this point, especially not knowing if you had other buyers, if the other neighbors are even interested, there may very well be utilities in one or the other. I would ask you, my advice would be to keep it separate.
Yeah.
And if this, if it, if as a result of this, a lot of people start coming to you and saying, hey, I'd like, maybe we combine it at that second step.
Well, I was never suggesting combining at all. I was suggesting and moving forward, but on another track, looking at all these others to, you know, that's all I was, I was asking, not to hold this up, yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, as stated. Um, next steps are multiple steps, including public hearing and advertising and all of that stuff, but you'd be well informed as this moves forward, okay? Any other discussion?
So you think this may be resolved in twenty thirty?
Yes.
Just kidding, just kidding.
Government moves quickly. Hold on. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and have a good night.
You too.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F two. This is Anna Isabel Dos Hesh Kudo. This is from the Rhode Island Day of Portugal Committee, and this is to request the to fly the Portuguese flag with flag raising ceremony on June second, twenty twenty-five at eleven A M. And this is, this will be at the town hall.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G one. This is Rogers Free Library Board of Trustees, and this is for two unexpired three-year terms set to expire January twenty-seven and one to expire January twenty-twenty-eight. We have Nancy Kellner with interest in appointment, Thomas Bart Ferris also with interest in appointment, Chris Allen with interest in appointment, Caitlin Komodi also with interest in appointment, David Perry with interest in appointment, and Christina Palmer with interest in appointment, however she was not previously interviewed by the council. And you also have the recommendation from the Rogers Free Library Board of Trustees.
Um, Mister Chairman, I, just one quick thing that.
Like a phone?
Yeah, just one quick thing here. Um, this is, I, I'm gonna make a motion, but I just want to uh, Melissa, just on, and I noticed it when we had the interviews. So like there's a C Perry and then there's a D Perry. The D Perry is a candidate, but the C Perry, when you open it up, is actually uh Chris Allen. And you hadn't, you hadn't mentioned that. So just so.
Oh, in the, in the.
On the, on the, on the agenda.
Okay.
In the packet, piece of it, yeah. Um, I was just gonna make a recommendation, you know, and the uh, we had recommendations from the library and um I would go with that and uh nominate Nancy Kellner for the um expired twenty, twenty-twenty-eight position and um Brad Ferris for, uh Bart Ferris, I'm sorry, for the twenty-twenty-seven position.
Second.
Discussion. Actually, let me say that again. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Aaron um to appoint Nancy Kellner and Thomas Bart Ferris. Discussion.
Lots of good candidates here, Mister Chairman. Lots of good candidates, a lot of great backgrounds. The two attorneys, we had two librarians. Um, Bart brings something really interesting with his outreach and business experience that he has. He's a veteran. Um, and then um some others, but wow, you know, what a hopefully some of these folks will be going for some of the other positions that we have opening in town, so.
They are so professional, their love of the library, their community education. Um, it was uh definitely very, very strong candidate pool, so, yeah.
I mean, very fortunate lately on many of the interviews that we do for various positions that we have great candidates and a real um, a great choice, you know, we're very, very, very fortunate that people want to serve their time in the town.
I agree. Um, I'm gonna add a different one, too, is that we have a motion and a second and but I would like to just put my own voice here and say that I was particularly, uh, I was hoping that there would be a motion for Chris Allen. Um, for all the reasons that everyone just said about all of our candidates, him in particular, I was impressed with his responses. And also being a librarian from Harvard University was particularly impressive to me. Um, so I typically follow the, the will of the majority of the council, but I wanted to put that on the record is that I thought he would have been and can still be an excellent candidate for the position.
He was. He was a pretty outstanding candidate. My, my, my only thought on that was that there were two librarians, Nancy and and him, and, you know, I, I part of my thinking was. And, you know, I, I, part of my thinking was it would be nice to have some sort of like professional diversity on that in terms of professional background and things like that, right? Um, but certainly I agree with the chairman over here. I thought Chris was absolutely outstanding. And there's no doubt in my mind that he seems like the type of person that, um, will be highly engaged with the library still, and that we hopefully will have an opportunity to get him on here again.
My colleagues captured well, though. We were truly fortunate. We had, uh, interviews that were about two hours worth of interviews with multiple people and.
Yeah.
We, with no shortage of excellent candidates.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, uh, whatever we end up deciding to do, there is no bad decision here. So.
For, for that matter, I'll weigh in my two cents, uh, you know, even though, excuse me, I will support the two that have already been nominated, uh, you know, nominated. However, Caitlin Carmo, Carmody?
Carmody? Carmody?
Yes. Uh, I, I thought she would add quite a bit of flavor to the board as well, you know, so somebody to keep in mind.
Any other discussion from the council? All right. So we had a motion and a second. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Aaron to appoint Nancy Kalner and Thomas Bart Ferris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck to both candidates. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G two. This is the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. This is for three, three-year terms, two set to expire August twenty twenty-five and one term set to expire August twenty twenty-six.
Make a motion to appoint, uh, Paul Labonte and Raymond DeLeo.
Don't we have three?
You do have three.
And Jeff Durham.
And then I just need to know the, um, terms. So two of them expire in twenty twenty-five and one expires in twenty-six.
So I do have a question.
One, one sec, let's go, and certainly you can ask, because I just want to get that motion on the floor and then we'll have discussion.
I suggest Regalier for the, um, the later one, the twenty-six one. Seem to have tremendous amount of experience. I didn't realize he was that involved with sailing. Well.
Are you okay with that? It's your motion?
The twenty-five for Paul and then twenty-six for, um, Raymond DeLeo.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Mary to appoint Jeff Durham, Raymond DeLeo and Paul Labonte with Raymond DeLeo at the twenty-twenty-six extended, well, the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six expiration term. Discussion.
Correct.
So the, can you remind me the number, number, um, you know, certainly, I'll ask myself.
Yep, G two.
G two. All right. Flipping through all my packet pages here. I have a quick question about, um, yeah, I'm almost there.
And I just want to say again, um, while Aaron's looking, uh, all the candidates shared a solid knowledge of the maritime issues that we have at hand and our, our direction of where we want to go with our marina. So I was, uh, again, just want to say that we had another strong candidate pool and they were all very, very strong. And, uh, the ones that were not picked, I hope still stay involved and, and we'll hopefully find them something else. Go ahead.
Yeah. So the que, the question I had was, um, there, there were the three positions and, and then the position says downtown waterfront rep and Kickin' Meara Riverfront rep. And I know that, um, Ray, of course, I believe lives downtown and, and then Paul li, lives along the Kickin' Meara River. Um, but there's the Papa Squash Shore rep, um, that's at the bottom of this.
So I, that's a great question that I can't answer, uh, but it would, the question that I have is, is it representing the downtown or is it the candidate lives downtown? Cause actually Ray does not live downtown. He lives near me, which is, yeah, near Roger Williams. So, yeah, yeah. Um, does, do we have clarity on that?
So it is listed in the creating authority says, um, therefore at least one member of the advisory committee shall be a user of the commute, Kit commute river, at least one member of the advisory committee shall be a user. So they, they refer to as users, not necessarily that they live within that district.
Mental note.
I'm not an attorney. I assume that.
Mental note.
I couldn't agree more. You, you get your temporary J D.
Let's go on record as saying that was horribly written, my goodness. So. So I, I, all candidates, as long as they put their toe in the water are fine. So let's assume all candidates did such, right?
Yeah.
Okay?
I'm sure they all use all of it, don't you think? Like.
Okay, it makes me feel better knowing that all views are represented.
Weirdly, it makes me feel worse that this is how this is. Yeah. So, all right. So, uh, other discussion? All right. So we had a motion and a second to appoint, um, Jeff, Raymond and Paul. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
You know what, can I just say, I think one of the things that gets confusing here? Because the content, like the, when you read the, when you read the document, it says at least shall be a user, but then underneath where it lists the board seats and where the vacancies are, that's where it says water, downtown waterfront rep. They're not really reps. We've never referred to them as reps of a specific area. Like I, you know, that probably needs to be changed.
Yeah.
We, we can fix that on the boards and commissions website. That's not, that's, that we can fix by tomorrow morning.
Yeah, thank you.
It just seems like it's the, we're not doing what the purpose of that is telling us that it wants us to do. You know what I mean? So it, but maybe, maybe at an earlier time, there was a reason for that. I don't know. So.
Okay.
Good observation.
Yes, thank you for catching that. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G three, and this is for the Recreation Board. This is one three-year unexpired alternate term set to expire February twenty twenty-seven. You have Patty Nanna with interest in appointment and Timothy Palmer also with interest in appointment.
I make a motion, we appoint Patty Nanna.
Second?
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to appoint Patty Nanna. Discussion.
I just think that, um, again, two good candidates, um, Tim Palmer, we interviewed earlier tonight and he was very impressive. I really liked him. And I'd like to see him be involved with something.
Sure.
Good point. Well said. I think we hope for all of the candidates who were not appointed, um, that they, uh, look at other boards and commission openings and get involved. We, again, this council was impressed by, uh, the quality of the candidates. So, thank you.
I have, I have a few thoughts in mind for Carla and Melissa, like assuming matching these people off the ground.
All right. So we had a motion and a second to appoint Patty Nanna. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll take a moment here to say to, uh, all of our volunteers, boards and commissions, thank you. Um, we, as I just said, for this council, we had so many outstanding candidates. We also have so many outstanding board member and commission members and the town of Bristol and the town council, we very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G four. And you have Elaine White, the chairwoman of the Bristol two hundred and fiftieth commission. And this is for consideration to expand the number of commission members.
Hi Elaine.
Hi.
Do you want me to take this one?
Yeah. Do I need to explain what my situation is?
So, eh, not really. So Elaine had reached out to Mary. Mary reached out to me to, to get it on the agenda. Um, and Elaine is the chairwoman of the Bristol two hundred and fiftieth commission. And recently and semi-recently has had some challenges with, uh, attendance, quorums. And I don't, uh, and nor does Elaine think that it's a lack of willingness to be part of it. It's just life gets in the way sometimes. So you were hoping for some additional members to help with the heavy lifting. Is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right. Um, the, so Mary, did you want to?
No, I mean, exactly that. I think that, you know, uh, and, and as you're getting closer to the events, you may need to have, um, you know, more help than, than one, just one person or something like that. So that's why it's listed here as like two to three members. It's sort of, you know, to make it, the meetings efficient and able to be, you know, to have the quorum, but also to be able to do the work.
And do we have those three in mind?
Well, Craig Evans happens to be sitting here because we were talking the other day about the village and he was asking me about what I was doing. And I told him, he said, I'd love to be on that board. And I said, well, that's perfect timing because I'm going to request something. I mean, I, I, I'm, it looks like we have a, about eight people now that are left over from the people that you didn't choose tonight. So I was looking at that. I, I don't really know. I don't have anybody in mind. Um, Andrea Rounds, who serves on the board.
She's great.
And we were trying to get somebody from the library. We don't have anybody on the board from the library and we think that would be great. But I think Catherine Zip, um, has somebody in mind there that she spoke to. Uh, I can't remember the woman's name, but I think she runs the children's portion of the library and she's attended a meeting and she was very activated by it. So, you know, we, we just need, uh, we, we have all the ideas now. And I think now it's just about getting the, the work done. And it's not the shortage of working. It's just when we have to vote on something, we need to have a quorum. And we only meet once a month and I don't want to do subcommittees. I'm trying to keep it super simple, easy. We meet once a month for an hour.
How about this? And tell me if my colleagues are okay with this. Because we are short on time, typically what we would do is advertise. And then we would then interview those candidates. All of those are very important steps. But because of the lack of time, because we have, we have the committee as we had proposed, but as all the things that we're talking about as challenges, uh, our next meeting is the twenty-eighth. Is that right? Could you, Elaine, um, come back to us with the three candidates you would, you believe would be a great fit for it? And this council can, will have that documentation ahead of time. Those candidates could just share very quickly why they think they'd be a good fit in written form. Look at it. And if we concur with you, and we probably will.
Okay.
Then we can appoint those three. How's that?
That sounds great. So should I submit that ahead of time? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, yeah, okay. Great.
I know that's atypical of what we do. So, Tony.
Yeah, we, we just need to keep in mind, right now you'll have difficulty with a quorum, okay? And you have a pretty decent number. We increase the number, but the last show up, then you back the square one with a quorum. So we're going to be very careful. Who do we invite in that these people are going to be able to commit themselves time-wise?
I'm not going to recommend anyone who can't commit.
Okay.
I, I mean, I've owned my own business for a long time and I don't hire people that think like that.
We just need to keep that in mind.
I mean, it's just not going to happen because I can't, I mean, I can't work this way. We're never going to get anything done if we don't do that. So I think that's right on.
I, I know that, again, that's atypical of what we do, but it's just for time constraints. Um, is everybody okay with that process? Is that?
Yeah, I think it's a good way to go about it because.
I appreciate that.
And a lot of this has been, just like you said, life gets in the way. Somebody who's really sick and had to have surgery and this, all these things have happened. And I'm probably guilty too. I'll, I'll try to do better, Elaine.
Oh, you don't have to. It's fine, Mary.
I know, I know. It's not that. I'll try to attend. I'll try to be better. But I mean, um, you know, I think that's a good way to go about it. We've already done a lot of that. And you mentioned there are people that didn't make it the first time around and they may still be interested and they may even be coming to some of your meetings. And we did interview those people.
Right. Well, I, I mean, if we ha, if we have a, a line out the door of people who are wanting to be on the two fifty board by May twenty-eighth, that would be just such a blessing.
Come to us.
Okay, I will. I'll, I'll, believe me, I, I've got a good idea now.
So if we're all in agreement, maybe we can continue this agenda item to the twenty-eighth. Um, and would, this council is looking for three, but would consider additional members if appropriate?
Yeah, I think, Mary, didn't you say?
Yeah, I said a few, like, I think I might've said either three to five or five to eight or whatever. And you came back with like, the two to three, yeah.
Yeah, but didn't you have some language that you used that was like, um, uh, uh, somebody wasn't on the board, but they, they went to the meetings?
Alternates.
No, was it alternates? No, it wasn't an alternate. There was a.
Ex officio.
Ex officio. Well, some of the people that, some of the people who are like representing other departments are not taking up a space of like a public member.
Yeah, okay.
So they, they are, um, able to, I don't know if they're, uh, ex officio, but they can vote, can't they? Or they can't vote?
Yeah. Why, why don't we do this? I, I, just so that we don't have to undo prior motion. You can make them alternates. That they'll have full voting power as, just call them alternates.
I like it.
So what do you mean?
So all, that's just a process end of things. So what we talked about, still come to the next meeting.
Okay.
Still offer those candidate and then we'll classify them as alternates, which, which would mean that if uh, X people don't show up, they are voting members if those people are not there. So a, we'll call it a full member and an alternate, right? So an alternate can do the same as a full member, part of the discussion, just like a full member, but are there in case the full member doesn't show up and can't vote.
So they would still come to the meetings, but if I had a quorum and they were an alternate, they wouldn't vote because we had the quorum already. Okay, I got you.
That's right. Yep. So they're part of the dialogue and efforts and energy.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you.
So we're just going to continue this to the twenty-eighth with all of those things in mind?
So moved.
Second, motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move forward, Madam Clerk, I had a note about pulling the consent agenda, G G four. Did I do, I don't know. Did we do that?
No.
No, we didn't.
So I know this is out of form, but could I get a motion to pull G G four? We'll talk about it at the end. So.
Yeah, so moved.
Second, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tim to pull G G four. That is from our consent agenda, which I should have asked in the beginning in the meeting. I apologize. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
So I, you want to do that right now?
Nope, we'll do it at the end.
Okay.
Just as, as it should have been.
The next item on the agenda is H one. This is Director Williamson, Community Development. And this is in regard to the program update for the curbside compost collection two-year pilot.
Diane?
So, um, I wanted to update you on the composting pilot program that we presented in, back in March. Um, and Sarah Turgon is here. She's, um, the director of the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. And we have, um, an update that I think, uh, is moving this in the right direction to have a, have a successful, um, successful project. So basically, um, if you recall, you had contributed, uh, while backing up, we had applied for USDA grant to do a two-year pilot program for composting. We didn't get the grant. Um, so Eleventh Hour Racing, who was a partner with that, um, approached us to fully fund the program and not, we would need, we would not need the USDA grant. We would go with the, um, eleventh hour's funding. We presented that to you in March to see if you would still want to contribute the match, which was about eleven thousand dollars for the two-year program. You weren't on board with that and thank you for that. Um, since then, we've kind of looked at the model and we, um, spoke with Eleventh Hour Racing. We spoke with Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. And what we'd like to do now to move forward is have the grant, rather than come to the town and the town be sort of in the middle of the grant administration and, and the metrics and all. Um, we're going to funnel that grant through the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District, which Sarah can manage. Um, she's also doing a very similar program for Barrington and they were another town that did not get the USDA funding. So the two East Bay towns, both under the management of the Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District for the, um, two-year pilot, pilot composting, uh, curbside composting pickup. We think it's going to be great. And Sarah's been, um, really good. She's working on the, uh, grant proposal. We wanted to get the update before you tonight and then she'll submit that. The other thing that's important to, um, highlight is that we discussed, um, the grant will pay for the barrels, the liners, um, we'll partner, the town will partner with InKind Match for advertising. Our Department and Conservation Commission will help to spread the word. Um, the grant will also pay to subsidize, uh, residents who want to subscribe to this service. And what Barrington did, which I thought was a great idea is, um, because it's a two-year pilot program and the hope is that by the third year, residents are fully doing a private pay with the service. We divided it by three years and we're saying, okay, the subsidy, you'll get a, a two-third subsidy the first year, a one-third subsidy the second year, and by the third year, you're all in private pay if you want to continue the service. So it's a, it, it felt like it was a logical way to kind of get people introduced to the service, make them aware of it. But also have a little bit, um, more skin in the game and then less pain when they actually do have to private pay. It's not as much money. Um, so those are some of the highlights. I don't know if you have any other questions for me, but Sarah is here. If you have any, um, questions for her as well. So that's the update. And, um, if you're in support, we'll just move forward with this.
Good. Well done.
Diane, I'm in strong support. I think all my colleagues know that. I, I think we've committed to, uh, you know, more of a, a smart ways strategy. Um, and I think this pilot really aligns with where we're going, um, as far as broad sustainability. Um, and it's, it's a long-term health, you know, so I think it's really important. And then also what it does, not only our community health, but it's also good for our town budget. So it's a win-win for everybody here. Um, and also it's cleaner. The town's not. So it's a win-win for everybody here. And also it's cleaner. The town's not really involved now. So it's kind of like, we're gonna do this curbside pilot for two to three years. And it's going to, I think, reap good benefits. So, well, I just wanted to ask you about getting the word out. Is there, is Eleventh Hour gonna help with that?
So that is part of the grant application. I think we're working on doing some sort of a mailer brochure.
Great.
We also want to make sure that Eleventh Hour, I'm sorry, that the vendor that Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District selects is, you know, all in. We don't, we don't want to have any sort of miscommunications between the town and the vendor in terms of questions from residents. We want them to be full, full management of the, of the program. So that will be important. And then we will help with spreading the word. The grant will include Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District's attendance at, you know, farmers markets, state street fairs. I think the Conservation Commission, I'm hoping to loop them into their really strong advocates for the program. So I think, you know, word of mouth will help to spread the word too. So that's what we're looking at.
Diane, what are you looking for to the motion here? Because this is a change in it. Is this just a receive and file? Is it, help us, do you know?
I would like to ask, I, I think it was originally in my mind, just an update for you, but I think it would be probably good.
Make a motion to support this change.
Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron, as stated, discussion?
No, I just wanna add to a little bit of what Tim said, and I think I've said it before up here. I know that Tony's talked about the times when people composted and they would give it to the farmers, right? It's always funny how we kind of keep coming back to these tried and true things of grassroots environmentalism and I love that kind of stuff. And I think one of the things that, you know, if Sarah, I know Sarah is gonna be helping with this program and you guys do some great work. You've done the rain barrel program with our town and everything like that. So this is on our, our first rodeo with Eastern Rhode Island Conservation District. But certainly, I'm really interested within, after two or three years of what kind of impact will this have had? Like, are we, is there some way that we might be able to get some sort of an approximation or something like that about how much we'll be saving, how many tipping fees or how much tonnage or anything?
It's gonna be Black Earth who's the vendor and we're gonna set up with them at the beginning, what the deliverables are gonna be and the metrics that we're going to measure all the way through. So that's gonna be from the get-go.
All right, great. So we'll be able to maybe get an update on progress at some point.
I'm coming to you guys, well, definitely at least three times, if not more, to be able to update you as to what's going on.
All right, well, we'll be very eager to see if there's been, we're able to push the needle on this and everything. And certainly I'm gonna be, I will commit right now to be in a participant in this program, so.
Right, we can put you in the marketing.
All right, so we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good Chairman and Members of the Council, the next item on the agenda is I one. This is Dylan Ferrera from the Rhode Island D E M Fish and Wildlife Division, and this is in regard to the deer archery co-op updates.
Hey Dylan.
How's it going?
It's good to see you again.
Good to be back. Just gonna share my screen with you guys so you can see the presentation. Perfect. So just coming here to give everybody a quick update on how the past hunting season went. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Just to recap, we have a Bristol Hunting Cooperative that we collaborated with the town council, the local police department, the town planner and D E M as a whole. It's archery deer hunting only from September fifteenth through January thirty first. A hunting license and deer permits are required, which also requires hunter education and archery proficiency certification. All archers have to be two hundred feet away from an occupiable dwelling. And legal hunting hours are thirty minutes prior to sunrise to thirty minutes after sunset. These are the, two of the four properties, one on Hope Worth, one just south of Gooding Gav, also known as Skater's Pond, Hundred Acre Woods near Tupelo and behind the landfill called Midtern. So here's just a look at the raw data. We had, I believe, fifty-nine deer harvested this past year, which was a slight decrease from the prior year, which was the first year. Here's a breakdown of the total harvest, again, for the private property within the town and the town parcels as well. So a total of fifty-nine with the majority of those coming from the town co-ops. Here's a look at the deer vehicle collisions. This also came down this year as well. And then when we look at them together, we can see that most likely what happened was there was a decline in the, in the total population. Because we're looking at total harvest, the deer that are being removed from the population as an index of the total population. So since we saw a decline in harvest and deer vehicle collisions, it's likely there was a reduction in numbers because of the prior year hunting. In terms of enforcement incidents, incidents, there are only just a few here. Most of these come from any new property when people are out. I think the biggest thing that I took away from this when talking with enforcement, the over half of the violations came from people feeding deer at Cold State Park, which has been an ongoing issue for deer and for us. And zero of those incidents were, you know, injuries to the public and those are mandated to be reported to the law. And then we have some ongoing research. We're doing a statewide aerial survey using a thermo camera attached to a helicopter. So that was just completed this past winter. So hopefully we'll have some good data to know exactly how many deer are in Bristol. Specifically Cold State Park will fly, we did fly that park intensively, so we should get an exact number. Unlike the rest of the state where we're using some modeling to estimate, Cold State Park, we're hopefully to get an exact and precise number. So we hopefully will have that in the coming fall. You can see that image, that's just an image of what the FLIR looks like. Basically little white grains of rice represent deer in the woods. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Dylan, I have a, it's difficult to not smile and say that, I'm sorry. Question for you.
Yes.
You drive through Cold State Park, you will see deer, and I forgot the name of the disease, but they're walking around as if someone had taken their fur off down to muscle. What are we seeing on that?
So that is one deer in specific. So that deer has been reported to us for some time and I think it's going on two or three years.
No kidding.
So we don't exactly know what's wrong with that deer. But because it's survived through the winters, we know it's not jeopardizing its health. So there's no need for us to step in and euthanize that one. The disease that most people think about is chronic wasting disease, which is CWD. And that's not a clinical sign of CWD. So that's not something we're concerned about for the deer population.
And then another question is the vehicle collisions, right? We've seen a decrease with that. You mentioned that you believe that, or the belief is that it's directly connected to less population, right? Because of the hunting.
Absolutely.
On there. At what point, and I think we've asked this question in the past, does, where is the control? Where is the number, what are we, what are we trying to achieve as a population? I don't recall.
So the density is gonna be ten to twenty per square mile. That's ideal for the forest ecosystem. Now that may be different when you ask Joe Farmer, Joe Hunter, or the people who care about Lyme disease. So that number fluctuates depending on a person's values. But from my perspective, thinking about deer biology and forest conservation, we want ten to twenty per square mile.
And in regards to, so hunting doesn't stop because if it does, the, the population goes up.
Correct.
But is there, do we, or does D E M control the amount of licenses possibly? As, let's say, for example, the population goes way down, so we would, you would then give out less licenses because the, on a hunter's end of things, there's less opportunity on there and also on a controlling the population, we don't want to decimate the population.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yep, exactly. So there was market hunting in the early stages of hunting and that sort of has went away because we saw populations decimated because people were selling wild game. Basically, people came together and said, this is not good for wildlife and conservation. Let's regulate this, make hunting licenses and deer permits. And then biologists like myself can look at data and say, okay, there's too many deer, let's issue more tags. Or there's not enough deer, let's pull back tags. So when we're doing that statewide aerial deer, deer survey, that's one of the things we're gonna use to determine if we should issue more tags or less tags.
Last question, incidents twenty-four, twenty-five. Does this, is this lower than normal, higher than normal? Talk to us about that. I see onesies and twosies here. For example, there was a no deer tag. There was one artificial illumination of deer and wildlife. I don't even know what that means. But one, so there's one and two on this.
Yeah, a lot of these are just people who may not know the law or regulations, new to, new to hunting. I would say this is pretty standard across the state. To me, I'm looking at this, I don't see any major infractions that have me very heightened or aware of concern about general public safety. And so this is a lot of things where enforcement are able to talk to somebody and educate them on how to move forward.
Twenty feeding the deer violations. Why is feeding the deer a bad thing?
So it's bad for the digestive system. So for one, on the deer's behalf, it can make them sick in layman's terms. But it also can make them habituated to humans and make them very aggressive. So I've driven through Cold State Park and when you're driving through that southern park, the deer are waiting by the do not feed deer sign. And then if you don't have deer feed and you're walking by them, they can become aggressive. So it's a public safety concern and it also can artificially inflate the number of deer that can, that the landscape can hold, which is a problem because then the forest is segregated because there's so many deer, because people are feeding them. But when they don't feed them, they go into the forest and they browse all the vegetation.
Thank you.
Dylan, Dylan, thanks for being here today again. I'll just remind my colleagues here, I think it was two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three, the first time that you were here Dylan. We had, my family had been involved in a collision with a deer on Medicom Avenue. So I can attest to the amount of property damage that can be caused by this. But also a complete disruption of, of your life, especially if you have a lot of kids and a big vehicle, because when you get a rental car, they don't just give you a minivan for a rental car or anything like that. So it makes it very difficult for people that rely upon large vehicles, like mine, to shuttle my kids to hockey and sports and things like that. To do our thing, right? One of the questions I have for you is, the numbers I'm seeing, it's, it looks, that's a positive thing, right? To see what we're seeing. What can you tell me about statewide trends? Are, are the number of deer collisions going down everywhere else? Like we've seen with ours? Or are they continuing to go up while ours are going down?
That's a great question. I don't know exactly off the top of my head what those number looks like for the trend. I believe they've been relatively stable, if not going up. But I do know this year compared to last year, coincidentally was exactly the same. So just by happen chance, the number was thirteen forty-seven. That's how many deer were hit and reported by deer, by vehicles. But I believe it's been trending upwards, so Bristol is bucking the trend.
Yeah. You have a pretty powerful argument to make there, right? Then you might be on firm ground by making this argument that if everything else where they don't have the bow hunting is going up and we're going down, then that's really probably one of the reasons why. But that also brings me to one of the other things I noticed is that there's been, it seems like there's been an effort to increase the enforcement of deer feeding. Has that gone up at all?
The enforcement or the feeding?
The enforcement.
I would say so for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, now that we have the co-op in Bristol, we have more reasons for our enforcement guys to have a presence in Bristol. So when we're getting phone calls, there may already be an officer in Bristol and it's easy for them to swing by through Cold State Park, see what's going on and issue citations. So I do think the co-op is certainly helping the enforceability in Bristol.
Yeah, and, and then when you're, when you're talking about enforcement, are, is it more based on, is it more of an educative kind of thing that you're doing? Are you just kind of stopping people and say, hey, look, this is not how we do things? Are they, they getting tickets?
I believe these twenty are actual citations. I would imagine there was probably another hundred of, hey, this is not appropriate. Let's educate the people and likely the citations are from habitual offenders that officers run into on an annual basis.
Okay, and then I imagine that you're deploying some social media campaigns and education campaigns saying, don't, don't feed the deer in the park and that kind of thing.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council?
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure I understand this correctly. I think you've answered it, but so there's only, there's only a total of like a difference of four deer from last year to this year. And you say that is not so much because, not because there are less hunters, but because there are less deer, because we've been doing this program?
Yep, so four is a small number, but it's almost ten percent. So ten percent would be significant if it was at the statewide level. Obviously in Bristol, we're looking at small numbers in the tens, so from fifty to, or I think it was, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but I think it was fifty-three to forty-nine were the, the exact numbers, but that reduction's a good thing due to the hunters being out there reducing the deer population.
Yeah, it was sixty-three and fifty-nine.
Sixty-three and fifty-nine.
Yeah, and fifty-nine. Yeah. So no, I was just curious about that. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just had a question in regards to if we continue on the trend that we're dropping on the harvesting each year, will we adjust the hunting? Scheduling, do you know what I mean? Because we're not going to need as long of a period because we're actually sliding in the right direction? Or just, I was just curious how that was gonna work if we're trending downward. It looks like we are.
Yeah, so depending on how things go, I would imagine we're gonna trend down for a few years and then we're gonna begin to stabilize at some level. You could then try to rein back on the season dates, but what likely will happen, then you'd see the increase because you'd have the reduction in harvest. And then your population would begin to rebound. So generally speaking, you want to maintain the level of hunting effort that you have right now because you do have that decline in population.
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to highlight the, the incident page. And two years ago, Dylan came to us and he said they would increase the regulation of the hunting. And just wanted to say that there was always hunting in Bristol, illegal hunting. And D E M really had no incentive to be here in the East Bay, but bringing this program together, you know, these, these the incidents that we see here are regulatory, they're compliance checks and the citations. That's what we're seeing. Again, I just need to remind everyone that we've always had poaching in Bristol. There's always been a limited number of deer that were taken every year. And they weren't reported, they weren't tagged. We knew, we knew that for fact at the police department that there was hunting going on. So it's nice that D E M is on our properties now and they're now regulating it. And the last thing I wanted to say is, could, could you explain the, what the detraction is to feeding deer?
Yeah, I will just mention the incidents, that's for the town of Bristol as a whole. So that's not specific to the town co-op properties, it's the entire town of Bristol. But so feeding deer, like, why is that bad, right? Is that where you're really getting at? Yeah, so when people are feeding deer, whether it's corn, bread, vegetables, pumpkins, apples, their digestive system has been adapted through time to work in their landscape. So in the fall, they're gonna be feeding on acorns. And in the summer, they're gonna be feeding on grasses. So when people are feeding them, maybe pumpkins, when they shouldn't be eating pumpkins, it's bad for the digestive system. So it's bad for the individual deer for one. And then two, when you're artificially inflating the number of deer on the landscape, there's so many deer that it just degrades the forest. If you go through Cold State Park and you look into the forest, you can see straight through the forest. That should not be what a forest looks like. So there are many wildlife species that depend on a thick understory where you couldn't walk through because they need thick cover to protect themselves from predators. And then like, again, the aggressive behavior from deer. So because the deer that might have the injury on his back, everybody feels bad for him and they feed him and they feed him and they feed him. Well, it's gonna get to a point where that deer expects to be fed. And when little Susie walks by and doesn't have a handful of corn, that deer could become aggressive. And you know, that's the thing that we don't want to see. And we've seen that happen before on, on other properties. Did I answer your question, Steve?
Yes.
You're welcome.
And I think it's worth to call out here that I mentioned incidents, but one to call out in particular. General public, hunter injuries, zero. And, and the line under that says mandated by law to report. So that's outstanding. So, and that's exactly what we were all concerned about and it's wonderful to hear. So, anything else from the council?
Yes, Dylan, can you go back to the, the deer with the microphone for a minute, please?
Oh, boy.
I, the D asked me to ask the question, why are you haunting me?
I have a question.
My favorite slide. It'll be at the end of all of my presentations for my.
Forever, yeah. Anything else on the council?
No deer.
Okay, so we just need a motion to receive and file with thanks, I would say, so.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim. As stated, any discussion? Just this, Dylan, thank you. Thank you for the clear explanation on things. Thank you for the efforts throughout the, the hunting season. I know this is a sensitive topic, um, but one that's important to do. And we're seeing what we wanted to see from it. So again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you on behalf of Division of Fish and Wildlife. Um, we're able to manage deer responsibly and I know the hunters appreciate it. When we're harvesting around fifty deer a year, that's almost uh, over a ton of wild venison um, that people can feed their family and friends with, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
To Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I two. This is the public notice from CRMC in regard to the Heritage Foundation of Rhode Island, Blathewald, Inc., one oh one Ferry Road, and this is, requires response by May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
What's the action do we need to take?
Receive and file.
Just receive and file. So move.
Second. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I three, Town Administrator Contente, and this is in regard to the solid waste and recycling services through Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation.
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you. So this is our uh, upcoming two-year contract with Resource Recovery. Director Porel is here, if you have any details uh, that you need to be um, briefed on. Uh, but I will say it's the, the uh, the rate will not change for the next two years, it's sixty-three dollars per ton. Uh, and it's about two hundred fifty pages to this report, but if you look to the back, there is a graph that shows uh, our, our tonnage that we deliver to Johnston, uh, Resource Recovery, and it's decreasing. Um, it's a combination of automating and the changes to the commercial uh, policies. Uh, so we're trending well, we're um, our, our ratio uh, is stable, we're pretty much uh, double what the requirement is for recycling right now, so we're doing well with recycling.
That's great.
Mr. Administrator, what does automation have to do with that decrease in tonnage? Do you know?
Um, I think people are more apt to get uh, private dumpsters now and um, yeah, they're not because we have ninety-five gallon barrels every week, so they're not overflowing it and they're finding other places to.
So you could put seventeen garbage cans out before and, I'm making that up, but, and now we have the limitations of the, of the town offered trashcans. Okay, thank you.
Uh, the last thing is, there's been quite a bit of uh, discussion statewide regarding um, rejected loads, that isn't a problem here. I think we had one in the last year.
Probably the last thirteen months of the last year.
Yeah, so remarkable for Bristol. You know, I would say we're, I, I, I'm gonna guess we're probably the best in this.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's even close to that.
Yeah. So we're doing outstanding. The investment of automation really paid off in our staff too. They're paying attention to what's being, what they're delivering, so I want to give credit to them.
So we have two department heads here, one that has the lowest rejected loads for the state of Rhode Island. The other one that has a lot to do with the safest community too, so that's uh, that's a lot of accolades around here, huh? So.
When did we adopt the uh, carts? It was in twenty eighteen?
We have more than two department heads here, just.
It was nineteen.
Was it twenty nineteen? Okay. I was just looking at the numbers here, so.
Yeah, the uh, I've said this before here that the uh, the only negative side is the raccoons don't like the policy.
Yes, I'm getting nasty, nasty emails, so. Uh, what do you need for a motion on this, or is this informational?
Just to approve the contract?
A motion to adopt the resolution and the contract?
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. As stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is D four. This is DPW Director Porella, and this is in regards to council consideration of the resolution in support of House Bill five three nine three and Senate Bill fifty-seven, which would designate the state as responsible for all maintenance of sidewalks along state highways excluding snow and ice removal.
Chris, did you want to share anything on this? As you walk up, it is tremendously amazing to me that we actually have to support a bill that says that the state must take care of its state roads.
Correct.
Excuse me, so, but.
So, so basically, this has just become such a burden on the, on the towns and the league of cities and towns, I think is, is very much behind this as well now. You just can't keep up with it. And it's not just maintaining them, you have to think about um, tour actions, as we know. I mean, people fall all the time, just trying to keep up with that. You know, financially it's expensive. The town of Bristol's done far better than most. We did the, the Hope Street sidewalks up and down. And what comes with maintaining these also is if you're gonna do them right and you're gonna do anything more than very basic spot repair, then you open yourself up to replacing ADA ramps. Like, over the course of the three years that we did those Hope Street sidewalks, we ended up putting in probably over thirty handicap ramps, which mean you have to get the grades right, you have to use concrete, when we were typically just doing like asphalt. So it's a lot of work. And then the other thing we run into is a lot of the, the issues with the sidewalks are trees and roots. So ideally, what you'd like to do is do some root pruning and offset the canopy of the tree so that you, you maintain the stability. But even the trees on ours, we can't even really trim or prune those trees while we're trying to maintain the sidewalks. So I just think it's a burden. I understand it's a burden for, for anybody, you know, fiscally, but you know, I, I'm in support of the DPW director and Coventry really started this five years ago. And like I said, the league's behind it. It's just, it's very difficult when you don't have total control over the whole situation to just take care of those sidewalks. It's very expensive. So I would ask that, I would ask that we draft a resolution in support of the bill.
So this, if this, if we were to support this resolution, this would say that the state would then be mandated, if you will, to take care of the roads that belong to the state?
Correct.
And roads, I apologize, and sidewalks too.
Two existing statutes, and they're just adding a section B that says basically the state is responsible for maintaining those state sidewalks.
All maintenance of.
Snow and ice removal.
All maintenance of sidewalks along state highways shall be the responsibility of the state with the exception of snow and ice removal on those sidewalks. Okay, all right.
So the town will still be responsible for the snow and ice?
Correct.
Well, I'm definitely in support. I mean, I think it reduces our liability yeah, on the defects of these sidewalks. And then if you think about the town's financial liability, that opens up to our taxpayers, so I think it's a, a, a good, what are we supporting, the resolution?
Second.
So there was a motion from Tim, seconded by Tony. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is I five, and this is tax assessor, assessor lead man. And this is in regards to proposed, proposed changes to the property tax rates by classifications for owner and non-owner occupied.
So going back a few years, um, this council administrator had uh, asked for uh, our legislators to have a personal part of the uh, possibility of having multiple tax tiers for our property tax. That of course happened. Um, and we are here this evening, the first time, uh, on something like this. Typically, the budget would happen and the tax rate is a function of the budget that was approved and the assessed values and all the things that everybody knows. Now we have the possibility of uh, separate tax rates, property tax rates. If you all recall the conversation and many, many, many residents came to the town and filled out the uh, homestead, I'm putting quotes on that. Um, Homestead Act, the allowing for decrease, uh, potential decrease taxes, and we're gonna hear that in a moment. Um, for owner occupied homes. Um, our tax assessor, collector, Christopher Needham, is going to walk the public and the council through this, but first, Mr. Administrator, was there anything you wanted to add before Chris kind of took over? So.
I'll just uh, say that the process went well, uh, with multiple advertisements, uh, multiple mailers were sent out. Uh, the town of Bristol has, has seven thousand one hundred and nine residential homes. Uh, of those four thousand four hundred and thirty uh, qualified for the homestead rate. So uh, with the scenario that uh, Chris Leadham is gonna present to you, our tax assessor, I think you'll see that um, we're providing a impactful uh, uh, savings for our full-time residents that, that live here. Um, so uh, turn, I'll turn the presentation over to Chris.
If I may just really quickly, there was a received item meeting, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, that um, the tax assessor has left on the council dius. Um, it is not marked as receive that meeting, but I just wanted to note that there was an additional information.
So in our packet, we had numbers and the numbers this evening that were given to us are very, very similar, but Chris, floor is yours.
Good evening. Um, I think it would be a beneficial to start the first page that I provided you. Kind of look at where the revale brought us first, before we talk about split rates, just so everyone has an understanding of, you know, during a revale, property values don't all increase at the same rate. So kind of break it down for you on, on what different properties saw due to the revale alone. Our single-family homes, and I use examples of a, a four hundred thousand dollar home that you'll see. Um, mainly because before this revale, our typical or average was around four, four fifty range. Um, with appreciation, the single-family homes, due to the revale, went up on average about forty-five percent. So that would put that four hundred thousand dollar home in the last revale to a, a five hundred and eighty thousand dollar home for the same property. You'll see two tax amounts. I tried to break it down for you. I showed the what their assessed value was in the previous and what their new taxes, old taxes versus new taxes. You see the owner occupied in twenty-five and the non-owner occupied being the same because this is sharing the same rate, because this is before we're bringing in any kind of splits.
Makes sense.
So just due to the revaluation, the taxes for this, you know, the typical single-family and as well as our two and five family homes would have gone up five and a half percent. Just due to the budget increase and due to the fact that our residential properties, both two and five and single-family condos, were going up more than the average across the whole town, which is around forty percent. Okay, so you're gonna see a little bit of a increase in the single-family and multifamilies just from the revaluation and the appreciation of values over these four years or three years. Our mixed-use and commercial properties, not including our apartment buildings, which would be six units and above, those properties went up, I'm sorry, went down about four percent. So they would have seen, without any kind of applying any kind of owner occupied or non-owner occupied rate, they would have been seeing some relief due to the revaluation. Our commercial properties just aren't appreciating at the same rate as residential properties are in this economy. Our apartment buildings, they would have seen a twelve percent increase due to the revale alone. This is just due to, you know, strong rents, very low vacancy. Our apartment buildings in town, along with the whole northeast, if not nation, have been increasing at a, a greater rate. So they would have seen a twelve percent without any type of change in the rates. So I think that just kind of sets things up. And if we move to the second page, just to kind of break through a little bit of the, the scenarios. Scenario one uses the same figures basically of the, the assessed values to kind of show that if we were to use a, a nine point six homestead rate, that would require us that all the other properties would be assessed at a ten point six one rate. It's just, we had over four thousand properties apply. Anything that's saved on the owner occupied has to be made up by the other tax rate. No, no, no. So our, our single-family, and if you, if you can follow, in, in taxes in twenty twenty-four would have been about fifty-five hundred with our old thirteen eighty-two tax rate and the old assessed values. With the forty-five percent increase of value, that would have, their taxes at the non, I'm sorry, at the owner occupied rate would be about fifty-five hundred and change. That would be a zero percent increase, basically. It was like a half a percent, but I, I put, is basically flat. These people would barely see an increase at that nine point six rate. The non-owner occupied for the same exact house and value would see about a eleven point three percent increase from their previous year's taxes. Okay? The savings to the taxpayer in that situation would be about two hundred and sixty-four dollars on a, a house that's five hundred and eighty thousand. Obviously, that you know, goes up as the property values go up and their taxes go up, they see, see a bigger savings. And that two hundred and sixty-four is savings that they would have seen if we had no changes in the tax rate and everyone had a single tax rate versus the owner occupied rate. So there, that two sixty-four is comparing, we just had single rate versus split rates. If you're comparing that same house, let's say side by side, okay, five hundred and eighty thousand dollar house, one house at the owner occupied, one house at the non-owner occupied, it would be about five hundred and eighty dollars that the one house is seeing versus the non-occupied or that eleven percent, okay? The when you go down to the mixed-use property with the new, they wouldn't be able to qualify or commercial, they wouldn't be able to qualify for an owner occupied tax rate, so they would have that higher ten point six one. They would be about flat. They would be seeing, they would not be affected by, by this changed rate at all. Okay? Our apartment buildings, they would see about a eighteen percent increase due to the non-owner occupied rate of ten point six one. All right, so you can see that you can see how that gets magnified because they've already seen a, an increase just due to the value differences and the shifts. But they would have seen about a twelve percent increase, as I said before, on that sheet one, just due to the revale. So with that, those changes due to the split in rate, it's, it's actually adding about five and a half percent to all of these categories because of the split rate. Whereas the owner occupied saving about that five and a half percent. If we shift to scenario two, I don't think I need to go through all the differences. It's, it's just a slightly less savings. Those people would be only saving, you know, about a hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If you go higher, it really, it, it starts to magnify where the savings is greater, but the the amount that the rest of the town has to pay to make up for that savings starts to get, get very high. Um, so that, you know, eighteen percent is gonna go up quite a bit. So I hope that makes it clear on, you know, one, where we would have been just with the revaluation, two, with the owner occupied exemption or, or split rate, what that will save the different classes of, of property, the different types of property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel. So what I'm, I'm kind of, I just want to refer a little bit to the apartments with the six units and above and um, it, it appears to me the the major increase, the fact that it's increasing so much, the percent change versus previous tax years, is that the val, the assessed value of the apartments are outpacing the single-family homes and the multifamily homes. So the, some of the folks I imagine who are, are building maybe the apartments are, the return on, there, there's a major return on that investment uh, in terms of the value of the property at some point is, that, that's just an observation I'm making right here. And that's something that I'm learning based on this data that you gave me. I had no idea that it was that those numbers were as skewed as they are.
Correct.
Yeah.
Mr. Administrator?
To, to your point, so there would be an eighteen point two percent increase, that's this year. Because the statistical revale, yeah, next year, as Chris Leadham said, it would be whatever our increase is, so it'd be right down. you'll be back down. But this is an adjustment because of the statistical reval year, which was the what, twelve percent roughly?
Yeah, it would have been twelve percent.
So that's un- that's unavoidable.
Right, yeah. Yeah, it's it's kind of like um probably the fact that you have four hundred and five hundred thousand dollar homes that the the percentage of value on those types of homes is going up a lot faster than the percentage of value on maybe two hundred and three hundred thousand dollar homes.
Could be.
Yeah.
Other questions in the council?
Chris, I think when we go out to the public, some may say fairness. How is this fair? And um for me, I think, you know, this really allows people that have been living in Bristol for a very long time, sending their kids to school, living year-round, it gives them a small break and investment properties tend to be categorized a little bit different. But how do you feel from a tax perspective on taxing fairness?
Pardon me. I mean, it's not really my place as an assessor to say, you know, do I support the exemption or the split rate or not? Um I do believe that looking at the the amounts that in scenario one is there is a significant savings, but it doesn't appear to be crippling the the rest that aren't getting it. So um I don't know. Is that fair? Is it? It seems maybe reasonable versus?
I see it as a small shift, but it's not a big swing. Do you know what I mean? I don't I don't think we're we're really shifting too much of that burden.
Right. And there is quite a shift. So about fifty percent of the ratable property in town would be qualified right now with what we've gotten in applications to be taxed at that discounted rate. So again, if you, you know, start trying to get a bigger savings for the owner-occupied, that burden really starts to to kind of multiply on on those that don't. So I would just, you know, in terms of fairness, I would keep that in mind.
Yeah. And I think what we're talking here with this plan too, it really kind of protects those commercial businesses as well here.
Well, what's nice, not nice, but what works out with the way that the commercial properties, you know, except for the apartments. But even our, you know, mixed-use, I know we had a lot of people come in and, you know, they were disappointed that they couldn't get this owner-occupied because they were a mixed-use. They have, they live, you know, in one part of the building and they have a store in the other part of the building. Those people, even with the higher rate, are going to see about a, you know, in with scenario one, a flat, you know, on average, flat taxes.
Yeah. It's good to highlight that. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Um and this might, I don't know if this one's going to catch off guard a little bit. I if it does, maybe you can give me these numbers at a a different time. But um I'm kind of, I I'm a little bit interested to know in kind of the dis- distribution of apartments and, you know, like there are some apartment complexes with a lot of units and then there are some that might just have six units. Is there any way that, do you have any kind of information about like the distribution of like how large some of these complexes are? Because the the reason why it's important is because some of the, whatever burden that is placed on them will be spread around too within.
Sure. Sure. So I did expect to have a question similar to that just because, you know, the apartments and and rents now are are hot topic. Um so to give you some numbers regarding apartments.
Chris, could you move the mic a little closer to you? That's okay.
So we have forty-seven apartment buildings in town or forty, let me put it this way, forty-seven parcels that are classified as apartments. Okay? Within those forty-seven apartments, we have a three hundred and eighty-six individual units. Their average is about eight units per apartment building. I don't know if this is relevant, but I did the the average assessment of an apartment building is about a million one. Okay? So that gives us an average price per unit of about a hundred and thirty-six thousand if you broke it into a per-unit basis. That would have been so then if you back into last year's numbers, based on the twelve percent, you know, increase in values, I'm sorry, the fifty-two percent increase in values, their value per unit would have been around eighty-nine thousand per unit or about taxes for that unit, if you could separate it, you know, I don't know if that's I like looking at it this way, just to to kind of get an understanding. But so taxes on that unit, single unit would have been about twelve hundred dollars last year or, you know, before the revow, before the split rate. In twenty twenty-five, the average price per unit is about a hundred and thirty-six thousand with the increase that fifty-two
What was that number again?
A hundred and thirty-six thousand.
That that's the number you had before, right?
No.
One thirty-six thousand per unit?
Yeah. So so I backed in. So now that one hundred and thirty-six at that higher rate gets us to about fourteen forty-three for taxes a unit. So they're seeing from last, if we want to compare from before the revow with one single rate to after the revow with the new non-owner occupied rate, you'd see an increase of about two hundred and thirteen dollars a unit. But a hundred and they would have seen a hundred and thirty-seven dollar increase because of the revow alone and sticking with the same rate.
So I I have fourteen forty-three per unit minus twelve hundred per unit.
Right.
Two forty-three.
Or is it? Fourteen forty-three minus the twelve thirty.
Oh, twelve thirty. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So you can tell I'm listening here. Except I got some of the numbers.
And I'd be happy to share these with you, you know, if af- you know, I can shoot these in an email. So they would have, as I mentioned, they would have seen about a hundred and thirty-seven dollar increase. They're seeing an additional because of the change in the rate of about seventy-six dollars per unit.
Seventy-six per unit.
Yeah. So if someone was to ask like, you know, how is this affecting us on a per unit? You know?
So you can take seventy-six and we pay taxes quarterly. So it takes seventy-six divided by four and that
Per you, yeah, per for tenant, if you will.
Okay.
You know, so and how that gets distributed to the tenant versus the, you know, the owner is, you know, who knows, but
And disclaimer, what you just did was take everything and divide.
Yeah, these are averages.
It is wonderfully simple way to explain and immensely difficult. So you can't just take everything and divide it by that. But there's no other way to talk about this in in a logical way than just
Talking averages. Yeah, so.
So nineteen dollars per quarter, do I?
On average, yeah, seventy-six, but or, yeah.
Like nineteen per quarter.
Per unit.
Correct.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Another another thing to keep in mind, talking about units of, you know, rental units, is so the apartments made up the three hundred and eighty-six of rental units in town. Two to five family properties, we have about eight hundred and ninety-four total parcels with two thousand and fifty-three total units. And our two and five family properties went up very similar to our our single-family properties. So they're seeing, they're not seeing that anomaly of, you know, that not an anomaly, but they're not seeing as big of an increase on the two to five families. So if you were to break that down into, I did not do that, but if you broke that down into a unit per basis, there, you know, it would be a much smaller scale and which is a much larger portion of our our rentals.
And the I guess the other, so I imagine by the logic that we're using and everything like that, once we at, once new apartments are added to town, right, this number will decrease.
When you add more units.
I'm hard to make units to town, like maybe a hundred and twenty-one units, maybe something like that. Just be a little specific.
Yeah.
We will, we 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 will see, we will see a per-unit decrease in the amount of taxes paid with the addition of newer properties and more value added to town.
Don't, I don't know that it would decrease your per unit, but you know, you would increase your taxable base.
Yes.
For sure.
Yeah.
Will that
Wouldn't be a decrease.
Would that decrease the what people are paying in rent? I think that's what it would, you know, what that properties are valued per unit, probably not.
Right. And I'm not saying it would decrease what they're paying in rent, but for all taxpayers, it'll decrease the amount they pay in taxes.
Correct.
Theoretically, right.
Theoretically, you have a higher ratable base, you'd spread out that.
That you spread it out. And that's one of the arguments for adding more housing because there's kind of a there's a, there's a sweet spot there where the sometimes when you add, I know Diane's probably like
Careful with that one.
But there is a little bit of Yes, there's infrastructure and yes, yes. But there is some level on maybe the existing
If you're looking at it just that simply, sure.
Yes, very simply. I'm 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 I am talking all things being equal and really simplifying things to a very I'm bringing it down to the most simplified level, just to wrap my head around it. So.
I think a micro level, Aaron, is the way to do it. I think it's the, it's way to get it. Yeah.
I know there's more questions from the council. I think there's more questions.
I don't really have a question. I just have, you know, like a comment that I just feel I want to make for the record. I mean, I think this is like I think this needs to be viewed as a beginning, like a like a starting point because we spent many, many, many um meetings on this and we all have a slightly different perspective on how we should provide relief to the taxpayers. And, you know, some of it was gone along the different rates for different um types of housing or or buildings. Others were like, can we provide a larger break for people who have lived here for a very long time who are elderly, trying to maintain their homes? And I think there's still work that needs to be done uh over the next, you know, year, two years um to try to figure out like that, like this, I see this as a beginning point, not as an end point because it's it's something is, as I think I've said before, we've had some of the workshops and other meetings on this. You know, this money is better, like better for me to keep it than for the town to have it, but it's still it's not going to be the difference that's going to keep somebody in their home. Um, you know, that can barely afford to live in the community. So I think we still have a lot of work to do. And um I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what the answers are, but I think there's a lot of work and a lot of research that needs to be done. So I just wanted to state that for the record, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. No, it, oh, Tony, did you have something? No, I I what I I just wanted to add to that. I mean, what I what I'm seeing here isn't, it's not, it's not really a radical departure from what we've al- already been doing. I mean, it is to some extent slowing down some of the growth of taxes for some folks versus the other. But ultimately, I I like what Mary says that it it is a starting point. So the decision that we make today or whatever, whenever we we make that decision, we're going to have a chance to evaluate the impact of what we've done and to make adjustments if if we do need to make adjustments. But thi- this was, I I was never really all that interested in doing anything radical here with this. This does seem to me like a kind of a incremental departure from what we had already been doing.
Well, there's no question that like whatever it's going to be done and whatever they're all going to be. It's gonna all be a slow incremental step-by-step process because, you know, it impacts so many people and it it's money and it's like, you know, and I think what we have to do is um maybe as we go further into this, I mean, like if this is a starting point, then, you know, look like what are the real goals of this? Like, how can we help certain populations if that's possible? What other communities do? And, you know, like in terms of real homestead, like this was probably not like a real homestead, but I think we need to like continue that research and so forth.
For me, I mean, um I'm definitely in support of the split property tax. Um for me, I think our goal or for what we were trying to do is we want homeowners to be able to live in Bristol. We want to invest deeply in our community. I mean, they vote here, they send their kids to school here, they contribute to the character of this town. And we're offering, we have the chance to offer them a bit of a lower tax rate. Um and we acknowledge their commitment to the community, right? I mean, by doing that, helping working families, helping first-time people, couples coming in, they want to buy a home, we can help them out because honestly, the problem is a lot of people are just getting simply priced out of town. And so um to me, I think at the heart that the this split tax rate really does take a very small step to really root back to what our original goal is. And so I I, you know, I I just want to say I'm I'm definitely in support of taking a step forward if we can.
Quick question, and that is, are we tonight or whenever deciding between scenario one and scenario two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Um I can, so a couple of things that's just to reiterate was as we worked through the budget, we were using a working tax rate of nine dollars and ninety-four cents. The scenario one that's in front of us this evening is a ta- working tax rate, and I'll tell you why I said that in a second, of nine dollars and sixty cents. So nine ninety-four versus nine sixty. That's what's in front of us. If this council chooses to move forward with this, know this is that the uh the tax rules have not been certified yet. There are possible small nuances. So that nine sixty could be nine fifty-nine, could be nine sixty-three when all is said and done, right? So there's a little bit more wiggle room possible, not necessarily actual. So few dol- excuse me, a few pennies, not a few dollars. Um second thing, it's a reminder to all of us that two hundred and sixty-four dollars on average is it little adjustments like this have tremendous effects across the board, right? We do this small step, which is not really a small step, and it's a lot of money. So you're moving it someplace else. We always have to keep in mind too is that this is part of a large picture that we all, and we all know this, I know that, but I'm just saying this for all of us, is that we have other discounts, we have firefighter discounts, and those are good. We have veterans discounts, and those are good. We have senior discounts, and those are good. And I just mentioned a few. There's so many things that go into this. And something that is worth saying again and again, we are the bottom third of her tax rate in the state. And you just heard tonight that we have the safest community in the state. We have the least amount of pushback, uh uh what do we call it? Uh um when we send uh trash to the to the Johnston rejection rate. Boy, I couldn't think of that. Thank you. Those are just two things that came up this evening of many things that make um Bristol a phenomenal place. So it is not just the bottom third tax rate. It's the highest and close to highest, maybe I say it's the highest in services too, and the the quality that you get in the community. Am I selling you on this? No, you already believe it. You're part of this stuff. So but I think it's worth it to say out loud that all of these steps are a big deal. I know two hundred and sixty-four dollars isn't going to change the world. It's not going to keep somebody from keeping their home that was going to lose their home. It won't.
You're right.
But this is one step forward. It's it's a significant step because it does cost a lot of money to do this. We talk about pennies, all right? And just for the public, one penny represents, I think it's forty thousand dollars now, thirty-five thousand dollars in in. So if we add one penny to the tax rate, that's how much money you spend on it. So you start doing the math on that. We're talking about a forty cent difference, thirty-five cent difference from what we were working on when we were doing the budget. So it's a tremendous how much little things make big. So thousands of dollar savings on this side would put hundreds of thousands of burden on the other side, right? So we all know that. I'm not, I'm all suggesting we're cognizant of that, but it's it's important to say it out loud. I think this is a wonderful next step. Um I'm speaking of scenario one in particular. I think that is a uh is an appropriate adjustment versus approximately one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So it's two sixty-four versus one seventy-seven. I think that makes the most sense. Chris, part of our conversation um that we had yesterday, um talked about what we pick this evening. So what I mean by that is the changes. You had mentioned that it was your belief that that change would then go through the next three years. So the delta between those rates cannot, it's not a variable. It has to stay static. Not the rate itself, but the delta between it has to stay static, correct?
Yeah. So how the state law reads regarding this is it says any tax changes from one year to the next after your revow year shall be applied such that the same percentage rate change is applicable to all classes. So how I'm reading that and correct me if I'm wrong, but that that there it's going to increase at that same percentage. So how I'm reading that and correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that they're, it's going to increase at that same percentage. The one thing that I'm, would like to get advice on or, or talk to the state about is as we're getting these applications in next year, I, I expect like we were at a, you know, what was the total rate that we had, um, we're at sixty two percent, right? So sixty two percent of those single family, class one properties applied this year and they qualify. So as we get more, which I expect we will get more.
Their effect will be greater because of.
Then the effect will be greater. And I would, would expect we would be allowed to change that percentage based on not just picking, but how that would.
And the legislation provides for, um, up to ten percent difference, right?
I think a fifty percent difference between the two rate, between two rates, but we don't, I don't think we want to get anywhere.
I was just going to say that, yeah, and I'll go back and look at it, but you're only, you're only suggesting five and a half percent.
Uh, I think it's about ten percent difference between the, the nine sixteen and the ten sixty one becomes like almost like eleven percent.
Ah, and, and you actually want to go up to ten seventy one, right? The ability in.
I wanna, before you make a motion and accept.
Right.
I would like a little flexibility just in case, you know, we.
I'll, I'll help them with the motion.
I don't think, I don't think we're gonna move off of that, but I wouldn't want to lock, I'd want to be able to collect the amount of taxes that we need to collect.
So Chris, you're saying with, so you're saying the non-owner occupied of, uh, you're looking for the motion this evening, if this council goes this direction, to have it owner occupied nine sixty, non-owner occupied up to ten seventy one. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I don't see that changing much from the ten sixty one, but I don't want to lock us into.
You're asking for that because of all the moving parts that we spoke of.
What that would do is it would can keep that savings as we stated for the on, owner occupied, the same. And then if there's a little deviation in, you know, property values for some reason, late a P, you know, late hearing that we accept or, or something like our tangible property assets that we expected to receive that got changed in the addendum, that we have a little flexibility.
But to make sure is that the town, we get the money, uh, we, we're, we're bringing in the, the amount of tax revenue that we need.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I think that all goes to the, um, comment that, that Nathan made, and that was, you know, like, because it's not certified, all these details aren't done, even with or without the split. We always say that every year, you know, we always have like, sometimes it goes down lower than we expect and, uh, by a few pennies, sometimes it goes up because we just don't know that. So, I mean, I think that, that, I think we do understand that. I'm not sure the public, you know, does, but we understand that that is, it's never really done until that bill goes out sort of thing. And, uh, and if I could just make one other comment.
Of course.
I just wanted to, I think like being in the bottom third of the tax rate statewide in safe communities and the services, I think those are all like wonderful things and I think we all agree with that. I think where the issue comes in for us in Bristol, and I don't know the answer, I don't, I'm sure the information is out there, I just don't know it. It's like, how fast is our property values increasing? I mean, if we're number one in the increase, in, in, increasing one of the fastest in the state, it doesn't really matter where our, um, our tax rate is because we're still, I mean, it does matter, it's good to keep it low in the lower third. But we still, people are still being, having more of a burden on their taxes.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's, that's really the driver. It's not so much because I think the council, the administrator, everybody's done a really good, in the department heads, a really good job to try to make sure there's a very minimal increase in the tax, um, in it, in, in the budgets. If you look at it, particularly on the town side, it's really not that dramatic. And we're able to do a lot of services, so we, we're able to do the roads and the sidewalks and, you know, we try to really make that as tight as possible. But the driver is really the property values and all the people coming into the community and, you know, like taking a house and saying, oh, I'll pay another four hundred thousand for this house.
Yeah.
That's really what's like the issue. And I don't think there's much we can do about that, but I'm just saying that, you know, we have to be really aware to keep these things in the lower third and all of that, but, but it's still, it's a huge burden on the taxpayers of people who have lived here and not earning that kind of money and are retired here and trying to like maintain their family homestead.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
When I was talking with the administrator and Chris and Carl and treasurer yesterday, Carl actually said is that this is the only time when you're unhappy that your property is worth more. It's a great point. Every other time, right? It's, it's good news and obviously he did. You know, I'm taking it out of context, but the point is a still a valid one, so. Tony?
Very, I'll be very brief, um, but, you know, one of the things and you've already stated, we're going to be very careful. It's wonderful, all the things that we offer in terms of exemptions and for all the different, you know, uh, levels, uh, you know, whether it's the elderly, the, uh, veterans and so forth. Although every time we go, well, we not, haven't done enough, we're going to be careful is to whom are we shifting the burden? And, uh, and sometimes we forget that, that somebody else has to pick up the load. Every time we give an exemption, we do this, we do that, you know, it's understood. And in terms of, you know, uh, I know you've got very valid points, it's making it a little more difficult. But it's also about making, you know, life choices, you know, for folks, you know. Sometimes some folks aren't in the predicament they are because of their own doing, you know? Um, I mean, uh, I, I'm not going to go through my immigration history, but the fact is, is what you do with a family. I have a fa- I had a family of six, you know? Well, eight of them altogether, and we may do, you know, you pick up extra jobs, you do. I know as you get older, you cannot do that, but then it's what you've done in how you've enjoyed life. So, you know, we cannot take the burden and wait for everybody else, you know, around us, you know, in the community.
So, Ms. Tim?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just had a quick question for the town administrator and Chris. Uh, I just wanted to talk about the communication outreach piece of this to the landlord, you know, landlords, renters, you know, on the, on the non-owner occupied. I just want to know about that communication piece, how we're going to get this communicated out.
Um, is to all residents or are you saying just to?
Just to landlords, the, 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 the non-owner occupied, how they're going to be affected?
Well, we're.
We're going to need to communicate.
Normally, the local media follows, uh, the, uh, business of the council, so I'm sure we'll, we'll be getting a call, uh, so.
So we're going to media?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we are having, we have some sort of communication. It's going to happen and it sounds like the, through the media, that's the avenue we're going to go down.
Yes.
Okay.
So if this council agrees, we would need a motion to support, um, scenario number one. And with, uh, a homestead rate, I'm just going to read it from the sheet of nine dollars and sixty cents and a non-owner occupied rate of up to ten dollars and seventy one cents by requests of, um, the tax assessor. And Mike, did you want to walk us through the rest of the motion? Was there anything that I missed on that?
No, actually, um, I, I just make it adopt, uh, uh, adopt, um, scenario one as presented with the contingency of the non-homestead rate going up to ten seventy one.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mike, did you want to add something?
No, we're just talk, we're just talking about, of course, this is all pending certification of the tax rule, but we.
Yeah, I think we.
We've got that tolerance in there.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is J one, this is bid ten sixty four. The pedestrian improvements on Gooding Avenue, we had the bid opening, uh, this afternoon at noon. We did receive five bids. The first bid was from Narragansett Improvement Corporation, and that was in the amount of four hundred and thirty five thousand. The second one was from De Amber Construction Company, and that was in the amount of three hundred ninety three thousand, seven hundred. The third one was from Universal Construction Company in the amount of four hundred twenty nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty seven. The fourth one was from True North Civil LLC, and that was in the amount of two hundred ninety nine thousand, two hundred and forty. And the last one was from J M L Escavation Inc., and that was in the amount of four hundred seventy four thousand, six hundred and eighty eight.
I make a. Please, I make a motion, we refer this to the town administrator, that in the best interest.
Second.
Yep. Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. Discussion. Gooding Avenue, is that a state road?
It is, and it's state funds to, for the improvement. It's a Rhode Island Commerce Grant.
I love that.
Yeah. But, yes.
Could you say it again? That's, what is that?
But yes, we are, we are improving state sidewalks.
With state funds though.
Federal, I'm assuming federal, well, see, well, yeah.
I am.
I'm assuming it's coming from Washington, so we're all paying for it.
There's nothing that we don't all pay for. Thank, thank you for deflating my balloon, sir. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is K one, this is the tri-town monthly meeting report for April twenty twenty five.
Motion to receive and file. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And then I believe it's the consent agenda item, G G four.
Yes, so, um, we will go to G G four, George George four. And Greg? Craig reached out and asked for, um, just a quick moment of the council's time and the public's time.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, by the way, don't sell yourselves short. What I've heard tonight as a resident of about twenty years was very impressive. Keep doing what you're doing. I think, uh, everyone's going to understand. Thank you.
Could you follow us around and talk?
Well, well, yeah, if, if, if you need something like that, of course. I'm, I'm here tonight just simply to maybe remind you, maybe inform you for the first time that, uh, a, a new undertaking called the Bristol Warren Village, uh, has, uh, reached the point where we have been approved now by, uh, an organization called the Village Common of Rhode Island. We are a chapter of that now, uh, the, the whole purpose of that, and you'll see more of these, these posters around town, you'll see some flyers around town also. But the whole purpose of our community is that we're a community of mutual support for older adults. We've taken about a year now to establish a volunteer corps. Uh, I think, uh, my partner, Dave, uh, Dave Jamison, what would you say, David? Probably about, uh, about seventy people? Yeah. About seventy people at this point, about, uh, forty five, fifty from Bristol, the others from Warren. Uh, there are a variety of people from all walks of life, uh, but they're ready to begin some of their volunteer services. And now we're kicking off our membership this week. Uh, so I'm just here today to let you, to let you know about it, to become aware of it. And then, uh, if there's any older adult that you know that could benefit from the following services, either rides to appointments or events, uh, technology assistance, social and cultural events that we're going to be hosting throughout the year, uh, friendly calls or visits from our volunteers, um, assistance with errands, shopping, uh, and help for small things around the house. If you know any, any older adult that could benefit from that, uh, just have them reach out and we can talk about membership, benefits, dues and everything else like that.
Right. How old do you have to be? Cause I would like to join. I need some assistance.
Yeah, there's no, uh, there's no age limit, but we do, we do expect mostly to be, uh, uh, older adults. But, but, thank you. If there's any questions, uh, you can reach me, uh, with the email address that's on these brochures and I'll leave some in the back.
Craig, did you tell me that there will be a, uh, something in the Phoenix about all of this?
As a matter of fact, the article was in the Warren paper today. Uh, there will be an article in the, uh, the Phoenix, uh, in the morning when you get up.
So that reference and how to get in contact with you and what you're offering will be there?
Absolutely. Everything will be there. And then you'll see us around town, that's for sure.
Good.
Fantastic program.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's not related to the.
Oh, it's not related to that. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved. So, second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Administrator?
Uh, I'm just asking if the council would consider adding an item to the agenda just to discuss the professional municipal clerks week.
Oh.
Oh, wow, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so moved, second, third.
Motion, motion, motion made by Aaron, seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is that what's behind us?
Yes. So if you, if you will see all the wonderful decorations, my absolutely wonderful deputy Carla is so great at doing. Um, this is the fifty sixth annual.
Fifty six annual?
Fifty sixth annual professional municipal clerks weeks, and it just recognizes municipal clerks in their, um, their work in transparency and accessibility to open government for the public. And I am very proud to be the town clerk for the town of Bristol and, uh, celebrate this week. But what we've been doing is we've been celebrating with the rest of the staff, department heads because, and the administration as well as the council, because we cannot be here and I cannot be as successful um, as I have been without everybody's support. So we've had a whole bunch of different, um, activities this week. Tomorrow we'll have popcorn for the public so they can pop by the clerk's office and we've been kind of doing some little games, um. If anybody wants to participate, there's a, guess how many feathers are in a jar and they have a prize, um.
What's the prize?
It is a Fourth of July jacket.
Ooh, wow.
Very nice.
Can never have enough of those.
Very nice jacket, so.
Could have been a trip to the town common.
It could have. You might have to pick it up there. You might have to pick it up there. So it's been a really good week and I'm really proud of the work that the town of Bristol does and, um, I'm very, um, grateful for the commitment and the support of everybody. So thank you for allowing me to share that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Solicitor?
The motion would be to convene into executive session pursuant to forty two forty six five A two litigation relative to, um, short-term rental regulations in the case of City of Newport versus sixty three sixty five Fourth Avenue Corporation.
Counsel?
No move?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony. As stated, any discussion? Uh, this is the end of the, uh, this portion of the meeting. This council will go into executive session, come back out, uh, and close the meeting in public, uh, but we will end the broadcast now. So for those watching at home, thank you for watching and have a good night. All. Opposed? Thank you.